Ah, trash, not a bar. You know, do you want lights across the street from your house? Do you want to sit on your porch and look at lights?
Is there anyone else who would wish to...
I'm sorry, it's just one of those nights.
You're fine.
I'm Miss D. I am at four two seven Sioux Court, Kechai, Kansas. I've been here for thirty-eight years, as I said before. I put the nails in the walls to hang up our flags. Those flags that y'all see, I nailed those in the poles. I like the fact of the last little part about the ice cream. We haven't had that. What happened to all of those surveys? I heard that all those surveys that I went to and paid money for, out of our Kechai budget, was just for the heck of it. Please tell me that was a lie, and the truth ain't in it. However, the only thing that I'm about to see happen is a liquor store. Now, I don't have anything to do with that part of it, but what I do have to do is, where are all the beautiful signs and the walkways that I'm supposed to have? And the new park area for me to run track on, which I can't because I have knee replacements, so I'm not running. But where's all that beautification? Thirty-eight years, where's all that beautification? And we're spending a whole bunch of time talking about a liquor store that's probably gonna come in, and maybe an ice cream pop, maybe. So if it passes through and he gets his liquor store, does he really have to make that ice cream place possible? So, I don't have a place still for my grandchildren to go get an ice cream cone. They can't get a hamburger. They can't sit down and have a meal with me. Listen, Kechai, can we just get along? Make a difference in this city.
Seth Arvin, one thirty-seventh Kechai Road as well. I've also been in Kechai since my mom was changing my diapers. My parents lived at three point seven Tomahawk. They moved there when it was built. And my wife and I moved away briefly, but came back because Kechai was home. So, I am invested in this community. I would ask, where does the proposed business owner live? Does he live in Kechai? How much does he believe in Kechai? I am invested in Kechai. I built a house here, right across the street from Oakmont. We originally tried to buy a lot, long story short, we didn't buy that lot. But, um, the thought that this won't impact residents who live nearby is, I think, wrong. I think if I sold my house across the street from a liquor store, it's probably not gonna sell for what we paid for. I'd like to think that if something does go in there, a restaurant, something, or see, I don't really care what it is, as long as it's not a liquor store, I would think that I would probably do better. I think your police are going to be responding to more crimes. I think a criminal who looks at opportunity and sees a small town with a small apartment might say, "That looks like an easy place to rob." I think I would if I was a criminal. I think you're gonna look at more traffic accidents. I think you're gonna look at more DUIs. You're gonna have less officers on streets to respond to actual matters that your residents need to respond. And I just, I really don't want my kids to be across the street from a liquor store. Like, it just, it doesn't sit right with me. It was brought up earlier, but there are a lot of people who consume alcohol and then drive to get more alcohol. My kids ride their bikes on Foreman. They play in the yard. We have neighbors that have kids, again, riding their street on Foreman, playing in the yards. And I just, I would hate to see something happen that could be avoidable. I think it's pretty clear, the consensus of this room at least, that the liquor store isn't something that we want as a community. Obviously, we don't speak for the entire city, but I venture a bet that most of you have heard from people in the community have also said they don't want it. So I would ask you to take that into consideration. I just don't think it's worth it. I really don't. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. No other, I will close the public hearing. And then we will go through each other's recommendations.
Ma'am, I'd like to make a request.
Yes?
As we go through the standards, we don't do a yay and nay vote, but we individually respond to each of the standards.
I will respect that. Ask and do that. The zoning use and character of the neighborhood. Which is I want us to start. Matt, do you wanna start? Oh, I did, the zoning use and character of the neighborhood, sorry.
Yeah, remember, I've death'em all.
I know.
I disagree with the Planning Commission's findings on number one. I do think it has immediate and that it has negative impact on the residents, specifically to the south and to the west of the property.
Yeah, the zoning use and character of the neighborhood. If you agree, say agree, or if you want to elaborate on it, you can.
I agree.
I disagree. I don't feel it fits the character of the neighborhood.
Okay. I disagree. It does not fit the character of the neighborhood.
Disagree.
Do you want to elaborate, sir?
It doesn't fit the character of the neighborhood.
Trying to get it out there. Consistency with the comprehensive plan, vision, character of the city of Kechai.
I disagree with the Planning Commission's findings. Page twenty-five, the comprehensive plan talks about it should promote spaces of gathering. And I actually visited the property at forty-six nineteen with Arkansas. And I didn't see it as a gathering place. I saw it as just a liquor store. There was flowers there, but not directly for retail. It was wholesale. So, I don't see it as a gathering place.
Okay, I just wanna clarify. So, the only thing we're taking into consideration is that we're voting for the liquor store.
You're voting for additional use to permit the sale of liquor or liquor store on this property, correct?
Okay.
The other uses that have been discussed and described would already be automatically removed on the property in the absence of the liquor to use.
Okay. I also visited the store, and I don't see it as a gathering place. Oh, yes, yeah, sorry. Okay, I'm just gonna have to say, no, I don't agree that it's in consistency with the comprehensive plan.
I disagree. It's not in consistency with the comprehensive vision.
Karen?
I disagree. It does not align with the comprehensive plan or the justice.
I disagree. It's not a gathering place.
Adicacy of public utilities, roadways, and other public services relative to the anticipated impacts of the proposed use.
I will agree with the Planning Commission's findings on that particular one in regards to the roadways and public utilities and public services provided.
Karen?
Yes, agree.
I agree.
Agree.
I agree.
Suitability of the subject property for the use to which it has been restricted.
I'll agree with the Planning Commission's findings that the property is suited.
I agree.
I agree.
Karen?
I agree.
I agree. It's likely.
Length of time property has remained vacant as of now. Well, I'm going back down the line. You want me to switch it up?
That's fine. I agree with the Planning Commission's findings that I believe the property's been vacant since two thousand fifteen, if I remember right. So, the length of time that it's really vacant, I'll agree with the Planning Commission's findings.
I agree.
Agree.
I agree.
Compatibility of proposed district classification with nearby properties.
I disagree with the Planning Commission's findings on number six. I do not believe it's compatible with the properties near it, specifically the houses directly south and west of the property.
Yes, I disagree.
Todd?
I disagree with the finding.
Karen?
I disagree.
I disagree.
Intent to which removal of the restrictions will detrimentally affect nearby properties.
I disagree with the Planning Commission's findings. I think it will have negative impact on the surrounding properties and property values.
Yes, agree.
I disagree with the Planning Commission's findings.
I disagree with the Planning Commission's finding as well.
I disagree with the Planning Commission's findings.
Proportionality of loss slash impact to individual property owners in the immediate vicinity relative to the public gain for the community at large.
I disagree with the Planning Commission's findings. And that's probably where I should have stated that I think it'll have a negative impact on the properties surrounding.
I disagree.
I disagree for the same reason.
I disagree as well.
Disagree.
Public input. There was no actual public input on this part, but the other public advice you can consider as well.
Yeah, I disagree with the Planning Commission's findings on this. I think the sentiment of our community is that this is not the location for a liquor store in our community.
Um, I just have such a hard time with it because we've had previous liquor stores, and it's just like, how do we decide? But in this particular area, in the arts and business district, I do not agree that this should be there.
I understand the staff did not have public input at this time. But I disagree that there is negative public input.
I disagree as well. There was quite a bit of sentiment against a liquor store in this particular location.
I disagree. I'm all about freedom. And I'm not against a liquor store, but in this particular location, I think that the public has made an overwhelming voice be heard.
Assuming all necessary information has been received, council has three options. Adopt the Planning Commission's recommendation of approval. Override the Planning Commission's recommendation of approval with a two-third majority vote of the governing body membership, which is four votes. Return the case to the Planning Commission with further consideration, along with a statement reporting the basis of our failure to approve or deny. Does council have any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
A move we deny, CU twenty-two-four dash zero-three.
Second?
I have a motion by Councilmember Hedstrom, second by Councilmember Burr. All, I'm gonna do a roll call, boot for this one. Matt?
I agree with the motion.
Okay.
Agree.
Todd?
I.
Uh, I.
It would be I, I think.
You're a three in the motion.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
I wanna make it clear for Debbie's.
You're voting I for the motion.
Yes, you're voting mine for the I for the motion denial. You, I.
I, okay.
I.
I.
The motion carries five oh. Case number CU dash two-zero-two-four dash zero-three is denied.
Thank you. Goodbye.
I call item number nine C. In consideration of case number TA dash two-zero-two-four dash zero-one, request to amend section ten-twenty-four C and section five-point-three of the Kechai zoning regulations. Before we proceed, would any member of City Council wish to abstain from voting on this agenda item due to conflict of interest, bias, or any other reason? Seeing none, let the record show that there are no abstentions, and a quorum of five council members is present. As a reminder, a valid protest accounts for petitions from the owners of twenty percent or more of the property being rezoned, or twenty percent or more of the property within the official notification area, as the city clerk determines a valid protest for this case. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on, for this case, on nine-ten-twenty-four. Has the council reviewed a summary of the public hearing found in the unapproved meeting minutes?
Yes.
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 Sorry, second page is... I will now call on zoning administrator Dustin Belton to present the case report, background information, and the Planning Commission's recommendation. Dustin?
Okay, TA twenty-two-four dash zero-one. Applicant. I don't know what's going on there. Should be Kechai Township?
Okay.
No.
This is just amendments.
This is the amendments. I am so sorry. There've been a lot of cases recently.
No, I understand.
Thank you. Okay, self-storage commercial. Commercial self-storage background. There's been a shift in the self-storage market where companies are offering storage facilities with units intended for individual ownership instead of the traditional rental model. These units are used more similarly to a private residential garage or accessory structure where owners can store personal property and complete small hobby projects. Under Kechai's existing zoning regulations, hobby, metal fabrication, and/or woodworking are prohibited activities on these premises, on the premises of self-storage commercial sites. The recommended update to the regulations would permit these activities for individuals and hobbyists. Commercial fabrication or woodworking would still be prohibited. Recommended action: amend section ten-point-two-four-point-C, page ninety-seven of the zoning regulations. By removing or hobby, this would permit hobby metal fabrication or woodworking in self-storage commercial. As you can see here in ten-twenty-four-C, commercial or hobby metal fabrication or woodworking, business activities not conducted in association with on-premise operations of the self-storage use. If we remove or hobby, hobbyists would be able to do woodworking or metal fabrication. Multi-tenant strip center background. Under Kechai's existing zoning regulations, multi-tenant strip centers are not permitted in the C-one Arts and Business District. Multi-tenant strip centers is defined as shopping centers with street frontage having multiple tenants set side by side with adjoining walls and circulation between units provided along the exterior of the building. These typically include a compatible mix of retail, dining, entertainment, services, and office use. Planning staff have received requests from the community to review this provision of the regulations and the potential to allow these uses in the C-one Arts and Business District. Staff also believes this fits the spirit and intent of the C-one Arts and Business District. Multi-tenant strip center recommended action: amend section five-point-three, page thirty-eight, multi-tenant strip center of the zoning regulations to allow, this would permit, multi-tenant strip center in the C-one Arts and Business District. This is a section from five-point-three of the chart showing multi-tenant strip center. This light pink is C-one. It has a double dash, which the legend up here says that it is use not allowed in zoning district. We can change that to A, multi-tenant strip center would be allowed in C-one. That is the end of my report. I'm there.
Thank you. Does the council have any questions for zoning administrator? I have one.
Go ahead.
In the original document on the strip center, was there a reason they were, that this was not allowed in the past?
That was before my time. I don't know.
Any other questions? Does the applicant, I don't see the township here.
This is not the...
This one's us.
Oh, this is us?
He's representing the city.
Okay. Matt, do you have anything you'd like to add?
This change is presented to council just to clean up our zoning code a little bit, to allow more appropriate uses in the certain districts.
Okay. Does the council have any questions for the applicant?
I have one.
Go ahead.
Are there any safety considerations for hobbyists doing metal fabrication or woodworking?
There are. The main area that we're looking at that somebody wants to do this in is out on Tegua and Mason area. They're marriage storage. They are selling like condominium-type things where you actually buy it like a garage. But they will have, they currently have like an HOA that says what you can and can't do. And if you're gonna be doing metal fabrication, I believe they are going to make sure that the owners put up firewalls and other conditions so that way if fire does happen, it does not spread.
Is that part of building codes? Or is that part of what we're deciding?
That's not part of what we're deciding.
Okay, that's why I wanted to double-check it was building code, not what we are... Any other questions?
I just assume then that environmental impacts by waste would be considered, but probably not in this.
I would, I would assume, I'm sorry. I would assume no more than a resident, somebody doing woodwork.
I would say particular hobbyists may have materials that could affect the environment around them.
Oh, you're thinking like cars and stuff, like the parts for cars?
Well, even plant fabrication can have a negative effect on environment, so that's why I asked.
I mean, this is not...
Paul, I can hear the first part, what you said.
I was just wondering about the environmental waste considerations.
You gave an example.
Well, you know, depending on... It's not uncommon for someone to have, let's say, a mechanic's garage in a storage unit, let's say that, right? So there would be a number of different considerations on the environmental waste disposal.
Like oil?
Oil, various things, transmission fluid, that sort of thing, batteries. You know, there's all kinds of things. And I'm just curious if that's part of this or if that's in a different consideration.
I believe that would be a different consideration. Thanks.
Any other questions, council? Does anyone in the audience wish to respond to the applicant or provide any new information that was not made available during the official public hearing? Seeing none, assuming all the necessary information has been received, council has three options. Adopt the Planning Commission's recommendation of approval. Override the Planning Commission's recommendation of approval with a two-third majority vote of the governing body membership, which is four votes. Return the case to the Planning Commission for further consideration, along with a statement reporting the basis of our failure to approve or deny. Does the council have any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
A move we approve TA twenty-two-four dash zero-one, text amendments to the city of Kechai zoning regulations as written, and approve ordinance eighteen-thirty-nine dash twenty-four. Second?
I have a motion to approve. The Planning Commission's recommendation has been made by Councilmember Hedstrom and seconded by Councilmember Dwyer. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay. Carries five zero. Sorry, did I do something? Okay. Case number TA dash two-zero-two-four dash zero-one is approved. The approval will become effective on the date ordinance number one-eight-three-nine dash two-four is published in the Ark Valley News. The next item on the agenda is council reports. Does council have any reports? I did not get mine written up. I did not. And I will, but I will include a written report in next month so that it can be a part of the packet. Any other comments for that? Staff reports, we do those on the second part of the month. Is there any comments on it or anything in staff reports tonight?
No, no individual staff reports. The only thing I would like to add is just to address the people who were here tonight and came and spoke up for what you believe. When I started here a year ago, I opened the door for anyone to come talk to me the Friday after council meetings. In the year that I've been here, two people came and talked to me. So I quit asking. So what I would encourage you is come talk to me if you have questions. City council meetings by design do not facilitate effective communication for your questions. And oftentimes, you bring stuff here, tell the council, and it's just not the environment for further discussion. We would be here till midnight, one o'clock in the morning. That's what I'm here for. Come and ask me. I will answer your questions to the best of my ability. So, again, I put it out there. The Friday after council meetings, come and talk to me. I will be happy to speak with you and provide you the answers the best I can. I wanted everybody to know, there were some comments about the city council. We have one of the most engaged city councils that I have ever worked with. I've been in public service for almost thirty years, and this is one of the most engaged city councils that I've ever worked with. And I'm not just saying that because my bosses are sitting up here. I'm saying it because I communicate with them daily. Not each individual one, but they call me. They ask me questions on items. They say, "Have you heard anything from anybody?" And when I don't have anybody coming and talking to me or sending emails, I don't have anything to report back to them. So, please, come and ask the questions. There's two sides to every story. And I can provide a lot of that information to fill in the blanks, to maybe help you better understand it. And the last thing would be the traffic concerns on Anderson that you brought up. I hear you. I believe you. We have been looking at it. I talk to the chief almost daily, and he provides me reports. The highest speed that he has had on Anderson is twenty-five miles an hour. I understand there's a perception that people are speeding, and I think that goes back to just the simple fact that there's more traffic now than there has been during this construction phase. So, please know our fleece department is on top of it. They don't sit down there all the time. They just can't. And from my perspective only, they're probably not gonna write somebody a ticket for five miles an hour over the speed limit because everybody's speedometer varies a little bit. So, you know, there is some discretion in there. So, we are on top of, we understand. But if you have issues, again, call, come talk to me. I will be happy to. I know the chief and his officers are on top of it as they are other places in the city council. That's all I have.
Can you talk about tomorrow?
Oh, thank you, yes. So tomorrow at six PM up here at City Hall, I'm hosting a information meeting for the construction project on Oliver. It is in two phases. This is the first phase. The second phase will start after this phase. The information we have is what the state provides to us. It is a state project being done in Kechai. So, we have very little control over barricades and detours and things like that. We can provide our recommendations. The state's good at working with us on it. But if you want the blueprints, the plans, to see the details of what's going on, please come. I'll be here at six o'clock. That's all I have.
Council, so we don't have issues. I plan to attend tomorrow night. And because I know we don't wanna have too many council members. How many? Yeah, we can have up to three, well, three, including myself. So, two council members and myself. So, I don't...
So, um, I don't know who was planning on attending, but I figure if we do in an open meeting currently, then we can decide now. Okay, so do we have one other who plans to attend?
Tomorrow night's date night, so.
Oh, well, not me.
And for those of you, council or, uh, citizens who cannot attend, we will continue to push information out on our social media page as it becomes available to us.
Six to. Okay.
Six to six forty-five.
Okay. So I have Todd for sure and Karen who's maybe, is there anybody who's a definite who wants to attend? Okay, that's fine. I just wanted to double check before we adjourn and then talk about it anymore. I'll leave if the second check happens. Okay, out of there.
All right, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, Lou.
Second.
I have a motion by Karen, second by Todd. All of the neighbors, say aye.
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 Carries five oh.